I call to order the organizational meeting. Start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whole call, please.
Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mrs. Thompson.
Present.
Mrs. McHugh.
Present.
Mrs. Bobstein. Mrs. Rosenau.
Present.
Mrs. Drewitt.
Present.
All right, we'll need a motion to elect a temporary chairperson as this is the organizational meeting.
I make my move to elect Sarah as a chair.
We usually, Marty?
Oh, okay, I elect you as the temporary chair.
Yeah, they told us don't do that anymore.
Okay.
Support.
It was moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Rosenau, to elect myself to be temporary chairperson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would you vote?
No.
Okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, do we have any amendments for the agenda tonight?
There's just one. If we could add, under consented agenda, under personnel, resignation of Wendy Cook, elementary parapro.
What is it?
Wendy Cook, elementary parapro.
Let's get a motion to adopt the amendment.
I move to adopt the agenda amendment as presented.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Rosenau, to adopt the amended agenda for the January 13, 2025 organizational meeting as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, please.
Under consent agenda, you are approving the amendments from the regular meeting of December 16, 2024 as presented, under personnel. Samantha, how do you pronounce your last name?
Toloman.
Toloman, okay. Junior high art teacher. Resignation, Wendy Cook, elementary parapro. I'm going to approve the items under the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member McHugh, to approve the items under the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yep. With us today, as you can see, we have our new junior, senior high art teacher. She is absolutely delightful. I got to spend all day with her today, just going over, you know, like our, some of our systems and we'll continue our work. She is a breath of fresh air, a delight, a positive, loves kids, and she's just fantastic. So, do you want to tell them a little bit about your background here?
I would, I'd say, I'm from Romeo originally, so not far. And I would want to stay, I live in K-Pac. What else? Oh wait, I'm coming from Centerline, but most recently. Oh, yeah, I'm here for two.
And she's newly married?
Yes, we just got.
Congratulations.
Oh, congratulations on getting married and a new job.
Yeah.
Awesome, welcome to Memphis.
Thank you, thank you.
And you don't have to stay, because it could, you know, you never know, but we just like to see your face and I like to watch.
Yeah, it was nice to meet you all.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
Welcome.
Awesome. All righty, any board recognition celebration this evening from anyone? All right, we will move on to our interview. We have a board vacancy, we have one candidate. Chris, come on up.
Thank you for setting up the hot seat, Laura, I appreciate it.
Yeah, oh yeah. We gave you a bottle of water, we're being nice.
That's all right. It's a hell of a bed.
So, why don't we, so the way this is gonna work, we'll give you a couple minutes just to share with the board why you're here, who you are.
Okay.
And then, we have some questions that we'll ask, we'll just go around the table, we'll start with Lisa and work our way around. And we'll ask a question and potentially a follow-up question.
Okay.
And then, we will deliberate in open session and then go from there.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start out with you.
Well, I've known most of you in one capacity or another, but my name's Christopher DeVos. I've been in the area probably 25 years. I got one, my son Brandon graduated last year from Memphis, got a sophomore, Julie in there right now, and a foreign student student, Leone Senior right now too. Most of you probably seen him at one point or another so far this year. Full-time job, I work for Macomb County Department Roads in the engineering department as a senior inspector, been there for 23 years. I served for Richmond Township for 12 years in various capacities, supervisor, trustee, boards of review, cable commission, various capacities there. Worked in and around this community a lot, a lot of volunteering, from robotics to Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I had registered Girl Scout leader, by the way, it is cookie season, see me after if they blame you. Probably have forms in the car. But, just love being in the neighborhood, in the area, and really like Memphis. My wife and I are both Armita grads, and the kids started in Armita, and I always tell everybody, "Why'd you go to Memphis?" It's like, because even Memphis today, it's like Armita was when we were there 25 years ago. It's just, I like that hometown feeling, you know everybody when you're in town in the school, it's just, we love it, so.
Awesome, thanks, Chris. All right, we'll start out, and Lisa, if you don't mind, we'll just go around the table in the order we sit. So, if you want to ask your question, you get first crack.
First crack, okay. After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
I think it's important to have, have a board, especially what we got, seven?
Mm-hmm.
So, everybody's got a different view on things, and I think it's important, even if it's not your view, that you hear everybody's view, and it could really help balance. I think that's part of why we have a board of seven, or in townships, it's five, it's the same thing. Everybody has their own opinion, their own way of thinking, but I think together you can come up with a good solution, even if it's not, it's not about, it's not my board, our board, in our district, is how I would look at this, working together.
Okay, thank you.
As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you and your family, and your friends, and your school, to do what's best for the students in the district. What does this mean to you?
A retired state rep once told me, you need to do what's best for all, at the time, all the residents of your community, and I think that's no different here. You need to look at, put your own, see past your own children, your own experiences, and look what's best for all the youth in the district or in the school.
Thank you.
How do you view the relationship between the Board of Education and the administration staff?
How do I do it?
Yes.
I've seen it improve a lot over the years. We've been, I think, when my kids came, I think Julie might have been first grade or kindergarten, and Brandon was second or third grade. So, since that time, we're talking 10 years, we've seen administration, principals, superintendents change hands, we've seen a lot of that, and I like how the relationship is, is now, it seems like it's a good cohesive relationship, from being an outsider and a volunteer and being in the school and just kind of looking in on it. I really like how, how the board and the administration work together now. I think it's definitely in a good spot.
Thank you.
Chris, describe your response. If a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked you about a specific situation going on in the school, what's your move?
I really wouldn't have much of a move, other than just to direct them to the board as a whole. If you have any concerns, bring it to the board, that's why, again, we're going back to the board of seven, that's why we have a board. This is obviously a public meeting, they can express their concerns at a meeting. Professionalism and confidentiality is definitely a priority in that situation, I mean, that's definitely not the time or the place to have those discussions in the grocery store, but certainly bring that to the board.
All right, thank you.
All right, having one graduate last year and another one in high school, what changes would you like to see in this district, and how do you envision your role in those changes?
Well, that's a big one.
Yeah.
So, I'll just kind of swipe through the question. Well, I don't know how we, well, I guess going through the system and seeing, I don't want to say it's a weak spot, that almost sounds too, too much, but you understand. It's been improving, but everybody talks about test scores, and test scores, and test scores. Now, I know the board itself doesn't really affect it, it has to do with more of the staff, but I'd like to be, be part of a support system that would help measures to improve those. As I know, seeing where Brandon was and Julie's frustrations, now I can kind of see where maybe there's some improvements that could be made with how things are being administered, and how the test results are coming, and student achievement, you know, looking at those levels. I know we've been improving, they could keep going that way, but I would like to be part of that.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions, actually. If you're appointed to the board, will you run when the reelection comes? Like, when it's up for reelection, will you?
That's in two years.
I was gonna say, I think that's two years, right?
Yeah, but that's.
Well, you know, I may.
Are you, are you looking for like a little bit of a longer commitment, or are you kind of looking just short-term?
No, I feel like I would. I've always been hesitant about school board in general, not here, just you hear so many other stories. I know close friends that have gone Richmond School Board, and people down the city on school boards, I don't know if I'd ever want to school board. And that was just like, early on, when, when I got to thinking about this, you know, it's probably, I can see myself fitting in here, and if you ask long-term, I could see myself running again.
Thanks.
I'm gonna see how the next few years go.
Sure.
But, of course, it's all kind of new territory to me, but I could see myself running again.
Great, great, good to hear, good to hear. And, and then, really, what do you see as, as the role of, of being a school board member?
Again, working together with, with the rest of the board on, on issues, or making improvements in, I don't know, just, just getting, working cohesive and doing the best for, for everybody in the school. I know we, like I said, with the test scores improving, or programs, or whatever, I know, I don't know all exactly what the board works on together, but, but I know having some, some values, some skills I could bring to the board would be very, I think, helpful.
Perfect, thank you.
Does anyone else want to ask another question or follow-up question? Are you good with the pay scale?
Yeah, is there like a probation period where?
Yeah, it's negative zero.
You get nothing for the first two years, and nothing after that. You're okay with that?
How do you feel about the time commitment? So, yes, we have a meeting a month, sometimes it's two meetings a month, quite often it's several emails a week. Do you feel you have the availability in your schedule to, to meet the demands of being on the school board?
I feel like I do. As far as the, the daily emails or occasional phone calls, I have, my full-time job is such where I do have that availability. A lot of flexibility, especially nighttime, lunchtime, I have a full mobile office in my seat of my truck, so I can answer emails if I have to, at lunchtime, break time, it's not a big deal. The one meeting a month, Mondays are usually pretty good. I know typically around Christmas and spring break, we take off, but that's what's nice about the school board, is they're usually with the school schedule, that's how we plan our trips, so I really don't see a problem with that.
Okay, good.
Chris, can you share some of your skills, especially in the technology area, with everyone here, and then show everyone knows how involved you are with technologies?
Yeah, do the best I can, I feel like technology's passing me up a little bit. I'm working with a lot of 19 and 20-year-olds now, because we just went through a big hiring, hiring thing at the county, but, so they're gonna teach me some cool stuff that I'm learning to play today. But, I've been a robotics coach and mentor for almost 10 years now, so as far as the programming, the building, the organizing, the administration portion of that, pretty knowledgeable with that, I can see where it'd be nice to have, so we always have administration attention, but it'd be nice to kind of be part of that too, because if the board ever had any questions or concerns, or help, or understanding something, or figuring something out, I would hope I could help contribute to that.
Thank you.
I just have one more. From your time serving on a township board, what skills do you think are transferable from serving on that board onto this board?
I think communication is the first thing that comes to, comes to mind. Getting to work with, with a board of five, and it wasn't just a board of five, there's also an office staff, there's also deputies, there's balancing budgets, you're working with auditors, it's just the constant communication with all positions, and it doesn't matter if you're a board member or a clerk, you're always working together, you're always solving problems. I think that's probably the biggest skill I could bring, is helping with communication. Yeah, problem solving isn't that, it's, we'll find this out, but it is, problem solving is, is probably a real good skill, I can say that I, I mean, even in my everyday job, it's always, every day is something. It's just being able to take a timeout, roll with it, and figure out what we can do, so.
Yeah, I need to talk to you about 94 from the other day. All right, any other, any other questions?
I do, actually. What would you like to see changed in our school district, and how do you see, what, like what type of role would you take in the change?
It's hard to say what role I could take in this change, but I think college, students, graduates going to college from high school, that's kind of, it really didn't become clear to me until I had a senior, and I'm sitting in that, in that room, and everybody's saying where they're going, and I think, and I don't know, I had to look at numbers, but I feel like, if there was 10 out of Brandon's class that were going off to college, I'd be surprised. Like, wow, out of 52, I believe it was. I'd like to see that change, but I can't say how I could help that yet, but again, I think that's more than just the one person to solve that problem, but that's something I would like to see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Since we do not have another candidate, we will not score a rank, since we don't have another candidate. However, a motion, someone feels a motion is necessary, we can do that?
I move to appoint Chris DeVos to serve as the Memphis Board of Education for the next board election in November 2026 as presented.
Support.
It was moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member Drewitt, to appoint Chris DeVos to serve on the Memphis Board of Education through the next board election in November 2026 as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You can't vote yet. Motion carries. Congratulations, we have a little bit of work to do here.
So, was it DeVos or DeVoss?
So, everybody says DeVos. My grandfather said DeVoss.
I say DeVoss.
The Fox family.
I say DeVoss, too, that's why.
Technically, it is DeVoss, I just never corrected anybody over the years, it's just DeVos.
Okay, I can swear as DeVoss, and I agree with the cheer coaches on this. They're like, no, it's DeVos, I'm like, I'm pretty sure it's DeVoss.
But the problem is with that, I would get, so are you related to them? It's like, everybody would say that. I'd say, well, you know, Uncle Dick would be upset, but no, I'm not.
Okay, Laura needs the floor for a minute to do some paperwork and some swearing in.
I'll not swear again.
Graduate group, do you sign to accept the oath to the state?
Raise your right hand.
There we go.
Let's find them. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the Memphis Community School District, Memphis, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Thank you. I'm gonna have a seat right next to Mrs. Drewitt.
Okay. Welcome, Chris. You are now a member, so you will be able to make second motion as well as vote going forward. We now need to elect our.
Can we tell them that if you have your own laptop, the information and everything will be sent to you through email, or if you want a tablet from school at a meeting, they have them here for you.
Okay. I'll write or sign you.
Okay.
All right. So, because it's our organizational meeting, we now have to nominate and elect our officers for the next year. Remember that when we move to nominate, we don't vote. If there's more than two members nominated for any, any one office, the secretary's instructed to call the roll, it's, it's in your between-the-lines information, so we will start, first one.
I move to nominate Marty Cook for president of the board.
Support.
Yeah, that's correct. Sorry, I didn't mention that. Any other nominations? And we'll meet a motion.
I move to elect Marty Cook for president of the Board of Education.
Support.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member Thompson, to elect Marty Cook for president of the Board of Education. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next nomination, please.
I move to nominate Nancy Thompson for vice president of the Board of Education.
It's moved by Member McHugh to nominate Nancy Thompson for vice president of the Board of Education. Any other nominations? If no, we'll have to take a motion.
I move to elect Nancy Thompson for vice president of the Board of Education.
Support.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member McHugh, to elect Nancy Thompson for vice president of the Board of Education. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to nominate Karen McHugh for secretary of the Board of Education.
It's moved by Member Thompson to nominate Karen McHugh for secretary of the Board of Education. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we entertain a motion.
I move to elect Karen, Karen McHugh for secretary of the Board of Education.
Support.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member Rosenau, to elect Karen McHugh for secretary of the Board of Education. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to nominate Amanda Bobstein for treasurer of the Board of Education.
It's moved by Member Thompson to nominate Member Bobstein, or Amanda Bobstein, for treasurer of the Board of Education. Any other nominations?
I move to support Amanda Bobstein for treasurer of the Board of Education.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Rosenau, to elect Amanda Bobstein for treasurer of the Board of Education. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our officer.
And Laura Shears, because they're all the same.
And it's too late to back out, so we're all... All right, do we have anybody for audience participation?
Yes, we do. Beth Hughes?
Beth, come on up, we'll put you three minutes in. Let me know when you're ready.
Can I give you stuff first?
Um, if you wanted to, if you want to leave something for us, yes, but.
You want a stable here? There's names on all of them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chris, I don't have one for you.
That's okay.
Where do you want me? It's good?
You can just leave them there, yeah.
Good evening, my name's Beth Hughes, there is Ida 7987 Main Street, Memphis. After the November board meeting, some parents reached out to me to share similar experiences that they've had with current Memphis Elementary School administration. This led to me to ask them if they knew anyone else who had an experience like us. It turns out they did. I talked to that person, asked the same question, no one else has similar experience. Each of them knew who had been negatively impacted by or to. This eventually led to the interviewing of roughly 40 people in a few weeks, with more referrals whom I was unable to contact. These were current parents of Memphis, both past and current staff, and families who have left the district, a variety of backgrounds, all walks of life. Of the 40 people who I spoke with, three went to the school board with their concerns, seven went to the superintendent, four claimed they saw were involved in the mishandling of money. All four declared they witnessed firsthand discrimination, nepotism, coercion, abuse of power, intimidation, and the targeting of not only them, but also their children, like my son. This is roughly equivalent to 5% of the entire student body, and 1.3 times greater than the entire staff at the elementary school. Just to give you perspective of this number, as it pertains to our district, and again, these were just the people I had time to contact. In closing, this packet is a compilation of signed letters, anonymous testimonies, copies of emails, as well as some disturbing text messages that the principal engages in. And like the referrals, there is more that I did not disclose in this packet. The collection of info will tell an unsettling story of a leader who demonstrates an unethical pattern of behavior. It shows us someone who's used these years in her position to build a system around her that works to hide her unethical patterns. By intimidating staff to the point of quitting, by installing friends and family in office positions and giving them titles like treasurer of the parent club, by befriending superiors and by smearing the names of those who get close to exposing even part of the truth, your administrator is able to protect your own self-interest at the cost of Memphis students. Over eight years, numerous families and staff have come to the superintendents, both past and present, and this school board claims of hate, discrimination, intimidation, misuse of money, coercion, and inappropriate conduct and targeting against adults and students. It should be noted, I came to understand, they were rarely given direction to fill out a form. In fact, if you go on our website right now, you will not be able to find it, it has been removed. All of these voices were asking for help with no disciplinary sanctions received. In the past, we've appointed our people that she has been, that she has supporting her, and they likely benefit by doing so. If they knew what I'm presenting you today, they'd likely be upset, I would hope so. We've also been appointed to the good things that the administrator at Memphis District ensured, let's not discount that, but I ask you all, at what cost? We have an entire group of kids who've now been systematically suppressed. I came here today and let the evidence speak for itself. I didn't bring an entourage, I didn't make a scene, I want to protect the image of Memphis schools. This is an opportunity to remedy this immediately, before we seek assistance outside this district. I'd be happy.
Miss Hughes, your time is expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Memphis.
Anybody else for audience participation? Next, we need to adopt the meeting schedule for January 2025-26. If I can get that motion on the table, please.
I move to establish the regular meetings for January 2025 through January 2026, to be on the fourth Monday of each month, with the exception of months or holidays requiring a deviation to the schedule, and for other time, regular meeting time to be at 6:00 PM in the Joseph Burns Library Media Center.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Bobstein, to establish the regular meetings for January 2025 through January 2026, to be on the fourth Monday of each month, with the exception of months where holidays require deviation to the schedule, or for other conflicts, regular meeting times to be at 6:00 PM in the Joseph Burns Library Media Center. Any discussion? I know that there was a call out just to say, is there anything that we need to change? There is a schedule in your, um, there's a link if you're online. Obviously, if there's a meeting that you're going to miss because you, you know, have a trip planned to somewhere, please let Laura know in enough time that she can ensure that we have a quorum. But they're all out there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we got some of the financial ones coming up here that we need to do every year. Buzz through these, please.
I move to designate Choice One, North Star Bank, PNC, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund as depositories for school funds for the period covering January 2025 through January 2026.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Bobstein, to designate Choice One, North Star Bank, PNC, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund as depositories for school funds for the period covering January 2025 through January 2026. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is the Michigan West Liquid Asset Fund, is that for, um, bond money? Or is that, do we have to do something separate with, with bond funds?
No, they would go into one of our, they would go to one of our...
They go into just one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was...
That's, that's not for bond.
It goes something separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this is no change.
Okay.
This is the same. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to accept the recommended official signatures as presented for January 24 through 25.
Support.
It was moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Bobstein, to accept the recommended official signatures as presented for January 2025...
Four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five through 26. Any discussion? No changes, all the same. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to designate Laura Heilig or her designee to post public meetings, notice of meetings.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Rosenau, to designate Laura Heilig or her designee to post public notices of meetings. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve the use of the Voice Newspaper for official publications for the time period of January 25 through January 26.
Support.
It was moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Drewitt, to approve the use of the Voice Newspaper for official publications for the time period of January 2025 through January 2026. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries.
I move to contain the retainer contract for Truen Law Firm PNC for legal services.
Support.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Bobstein, to continue the re-trainer, retainer contract for Truen Law Firm PNC for legal services. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to have UHY LLP conduct and complete the 24-25 audit.
Is that supposed to be 25-26?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That's what, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to have UHY LLP conduct and complete the 2025-26 audit.
Support.
It was moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Bobstein, to have UHY LLP conduct and complete the 2025-26 audit. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Review Board bylaws.
Okay. And I move to approve the board bylaws as presented.
Support.
It was moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member Rosenau, to approve the board bylaws as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Less.
Guys, love. Thanks.
All right, that is it for those that we have to do every year. Our board committees, so, we don't make motions on these, um, but let's review where we are right now, and obviously, um, Mr. DeVoe will be assigned to a couple of committees. Um, DeVos. So now we're saying DeVos?
Well, wait.
You said DeVoe earlier.
But I said the correct people, wait a minute.
Oh.
Close that.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go with what I've said for years.
There you go.
How about Chris?
I love it.
All right, so the current committees. Finance, Nancy Thompson, Karen McHugh, and myself. Athletic, Amanda Bobstein, myself, and Lisa Druitt. Facilities and grounds are just myself and Leslie Rosenau, and I'd like to add Chris DeVoe to that, or...
Chris.
I can't do it. Um, Chris DeVos to that. Um, the open seat was in that place, or at least was last year. And I think his, your experience with the road commission certainly lends itself to buildings and grounds, or facilities and grounds.
Sure.
And we have a great system in place right now, and somebody leading the team that's doing a really nice job. Um, student reps. Um, Leslie, Leslie, you started it, so I think you get to keep it.
Thank you.
Um, along with Amanda and Sarah, or designee for interviews, so I don't see any reason to change that. By the way, if somebody wants to do something different, or wants to join one, um, please speak up. Remembering that you can't, we can't have more than three of us, um, in a committee room at one time, because that would represent a quorum. Um, policy right now is Amanda, Leslie, and Nancy. RISA representative, um, has been Karen for a long, long time with Leslie as an alternate. You still want to continue, if you don't want to continue doing something, speak up now, because otherwise it's...
Yeah, I'm the president, so I better.
You kind of, right, I mean, how could you not be? I mean, I'm just saying. I, I don't, and then sinking fund, um...
Do we need that for ten years?
The sinking fund?
The sinking fund.
It is, oh, do you, are you asking when they need to renew, when it would need to be renewed? It would need to, Adam told me 26, May of 26.
So we still need the...
But isn't the sinking fund now the current bond committee? Amanda, all of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we use that for that.
You use that for that.
That's true, so sinking fund, bond.
Yeah.
So that's another one, Chris, that we need one more person, if you would like to join in. And that's just basically, as we're going through the different changes with the bond and stuff like that, meetings that, that group needs.
And a lot of that will be related to the buildings.
That's true.
Okay.
So I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Especially with new technology, those promote...
All right, anybody want to, is there anything that we should add? I don't think there is, but...
Yeah, we have personnel here. We don't have personnel here.
I think that changed.
Yeah, we changed.
We were moved.
That's what I thought, so this actually should not be out there. And the same thing with DSIT, that's...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, okay, so those are, things are like old ones, that's okay.
Yeah. All right, we don't need any motions on that, so...
You don't need, give me the, um, board on any school information anymore.
We just had a meeting at RISA, but I did my updates, you'll see. It was the biggest crowd we've ever had. Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, there isn't any else to establish tonight than that. Superintendent Evaluation Planning, there is a draft in your packet. Let's pull that out and look at it. Of course, we just completed, um, um, the final evaluation in December. So this is, we follow the January to December model, so... I thought we did the indicators of success and evidence at the regular meeting, not tonight.
The, the only thing we do is set the calendar.
We set the calendar tonight.
Right.
Yeah, so the draft has us, the evaluation timeline, indicators of success and evidence setting. The indicators for success and evidence setting needs to be in the January 27.
I can put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's just my... Um, so do we want to move that to the, our regularly scheduled meeting here in January?
January 27.
Okay.
So Laura will move that.
Okay.
So just the evaluation timeline, so just this thing in front of you. So we're saying that today, we're going to decide this. April 14th would be the written informal provided by Sarah to us. June 9th would be the written formal update and evidence provided. June 16th would be, um, the opportunity for the board to provide questions to me, um, for Sarah, and then June 23rd, oh, my anniversary, um, I'll bring Chris to the meeting, will be the mid-year written formal evaluation. Remember, this is something that's new, that we got trained on in our superintendent training. So that's one thing, is in order to, um, in order to evaluate a superintendent, you must take the superintendent evaluation training. It is available online, so we'll get you signed up. Laura will get you signed up for that. She's good about getting that done.
It's very entertaining.
It's very entertaining. It is, it is, it is actually good, it just, it's just a lot of entertainment. Yeah. Um, and so we'll do that, um, mid-year written formal evaluation on June 23rd, and then August 11th, another informal update. November 3rd is when Sarah will provide her self-evaluation and evidence, and then again on November 17th, provide questions to me, um, if you have any, about her self-evaluation or evidence for clarification, and then December 1st, the formal evaluation. Um, and we adopt that and do all that fun stuff in December. So I don't think we need a motion on this, do we? I don't think we did. We just have to agree that that's the timeline. So the only thing we've changed is indicators of success and evidence setting will take place January 27th in two weeks. Everything else remains the same, so adjust your calendar. Don't think you're taking December 1st off. No, I don't think there's any action needed other than just...
On the 27th, what, in preparation?
Indicators of success and evidence setting? I would study your superintendent evaluation materials that you have, and if you've misplaced them, go find them. You've got two weeks to, there you go. I would review the superintendent instrument.
So they already goal set?
That's what I was, and I was trying to figure out if we...
Yeah, and then you'll provide me with the evidence that you would like me to provide.
The evidence and then like two goals.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, not six, two.
When we did the evaluation, did we brainstorm?
We didn't. We knew that we were, based on what he said, um, we were supposed to do that at the start of the new, the new year's formal evaluation. So, like, this is establishing a timeline on the 27th. We will goal set, and you will tell me the type of ed- evidence I would like to, that you would like me to provide, to demonstrate progress towards those goals. He did say two goals. Um, he may have said three absolute max, but I don't recall, but for sure, but yeah.
He said three max, but don't do three, two, two.
Yes, that's what he said. Mm-hmm. You look like you have a question. What do you think?
I'm just trying to think of, when, when were we putting, we didn't agree on any. We didn't put them down, but did anybody write any...
I have last...
...asked, yes, done?
No.
Oh, we did, you're finally done?
We didn't do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we did not do that purposefully.
Yeah.
Because he told us to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Okay, that's it on that. Superintendent's comments?
Um, I just wanted to point out that there, just to make sure that there's no confusion, there is the complaint forms on the parent tab of the, um, Memphis Community Schools website. There are, we've, everybody knows we change policies. So when you change from Neola to Truen, your policies are different, and therefore the forms look different, but they are there. So I just wanted to make sure that...
What are they called?
If you go to the parent tab, on the right-hand side, you'll see, um, Truen, it's specific, it has to be relating to, um, bullying, discrimination, Title IX or Title VII. And you'll see, or do you see them on the right-hand side, Nancy?
Parent information?
Yeah.
Our GSR parent information.
Yeah, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see all of them, list the policy and the forms.
So anti harassment, or so harassment, anti harassment, harassment staff, anti harassment students, bullying.
And then we have Title IX, Title VII, which is discrimination. It's in the Title IX. When you open up Title IX, because discrimination based on any protected class or, um, sex, it's all the same complaint form.
Isn't that why we make it more transparent, it's simple, all these...
Uh, well, I mean, they can pull it from the bar board policies, but that's really difficult. If they were to just look at the board policies, like, we put it off to the side to make it, for super easy. Yeah, but it has, oh, I didn't know that. He has to be, it has to be on there separately.
As well as the list.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if it, just, just for, it used to be with the old policies, there used to be one that if you had a concern, or you had a complaint to the district or whatever, there was a form for that. That complaint is no longer in...
That form was Neola, so that's not...
Okay, so that's gone.
Yeah.
So now unless it's harassment, bullying, Title IX or Title VII, we do not have a complaint.
Discrimination, yes. We do not. So there...
There, if you're somewhere, I'm just trying to...
Maybe hit the word.
This is report form.
No, maybe that's it. Oh, there it is. Yeah.
Employee rights, discrimination retaliation.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah.
And then the, the Neola one, to be clear, had a 10-day limit from the incident. So you had to file that within 10 days. So it couldn't be something from, you know, months ago, or years ago, or whatever. So it was a 10-day, um...
Do we have that with Truen, too?
Truen's is all related to the legal definitions of employee complaints, which is discrimination, the legal definition of discrimination, which is relating to Title IX or Title VII. Harassment, the legal def- definition of harassment, which is also on the website. Bullying, again, the Michigan revised school code definition of bullying, and then, um... What's that?
There's no form. There's only one for Title IX. There's only a form for harassment and Title IX, so...
Correct, because the bullying directions are on there, if you want to file a bullying complaint.
Oh, okay.
It's the policy that's listed. So anytime, any, anytime anyone says the word bullying, that's, that, that, um, policy is provided, so they know what the steps are.
What's the chain of command on that, once a parent files a, any kind of complaint? What's the process after that?
So if it's not a, like I said, if it's not the Truen policy, it's, um, discrimination, harassment, bullying, um, you have to go to the, the chain of command, which is also posted on the website, is you meet with the staff member who you are claiming, you know, um, I guess was, was wrong, or, or, you know, was, did you wrong? If that does not work, then you have to take that exact thing with the building principal. There will be a meeting with the building principal, staff member, and person. Then if that doesn't work, then they go to me, and that's, uh, superintendent, principal, staff member. And if the resolution is not sought, then, at that point, we can schedule a closed hearing, because you typically, if the complaint involves somebody wanting somebody to, you know, have, um, discipline, which is almost always what happens, that's a closed hearing, um, based on the employee's preference. They, there is a requirement that, uh, all discipline-related, um, hearings, complaints would go forward to the board in a closed session, and that way the board can get both sides.
True.
Because otherwise, um, if it's open session, there's not, there's not allowed to be any type of a back and forth. And so if someone's having a... And so if someone's having a complaint or an accusation brought against them, they have a right to a closed hearing, to hear and go back and forth.
Okay.
So that's how it goes. But it's got the legalities of Title IX, which is discrimination based on sex, Title VII, which is discrimination based on a protected class such as race, religion, national origin, ethnicity, you know, any of those protected class. That's a Title VII. Those, and harassment and bullying, those, they trump everything, and that is an immediate complaint, right with the district representative, which you have to identify legally with the Office of Civil Rights. For everybody's purposes, which is posted everywhere, I am that compliance officer. So anytime those complaints, they basically, what, what, in essence, what it does is it gets to skip the chain of command. For the legal definition of discrimination, Title IX, Title VII, harassment, the legal definition of harassment, and the legal definition of bullying. All other complaints have to go through that process to ensure that due process is in place.
Okay.
Yeah, welcome.
Are the procedures, are there any where, they used, I, I guess that, I remember going through and switching over the policies, but that chain of command and, you know, where it has to go to the teacher, it has to go to the building principal, it has to.
It's on the website.
Under.
Uh, Laura, where do we put it? If I could see your computer, I can find it. Thanks. Thank you. Organizational chart, right here. Right on the parent command, right, not parent command, parent tab, the organizational chart, right there. And of course, once it got to me, if there was no resolution, and, you know, they wanted to continue it, I would let them know, we need to schedule a closed session with Laura, so that the employee in question has a right to, you know, have a hearing in front of the board. And then the board obviously doesn't make decisions about staff, but they certainly can direct me to do things.
When you read in the handbooks, is there anything in the handbook that talks about a concern? And I, I don't even want to say the word complaint, but if, if you have a complaint, you have a concern, you want to bring it, that talks about, you know, the procedure of, where do you start? Who do you take it to?
I mean, I, I can double check if it's written, but I can tell you that every parent that reaches out to me, I let them know that this is what, you know, every, every parent that reaches out.
Don't you find that parents reach out to you in the beginning anyway, and most of the time you're referring them back to the website?
Honestly, because of the consistency, it's gotten so much better. And at this point now, most parents, when they call me, will say, I've tried to resolve it, I've tried to resolve it, and then they list all the names. And then, you know, I, in almost every case, it's all, it's almost always like, I end up acting almost like a mediator, and then I'll have that meeting, and it's resolved, in almost every case. The only time it doesn't seem to be resolved like that is when one person, or a party, or two, or whatever the, the complaint is, they only are satisfied with one outcome. So for example, and I'm only going to be, be feel like my problem is resolved if this happens. And then, you know, being problem resolution, resolution seeking does not, is not synonymous with only, only, you know, doing what somebody wants, because the totality of the situation, there's laws, there's employee due process, there's all of these things, there's, especially in a school, revised school code is very, very clear about all of those processes when relating to investigations. So, and I would say that in my experience, even as a principal, in fact, as a principal, I don't think I ever had anybody have to go to a superintendent because we were able to reach resolution. But the most important thing is having a mediation time. Unfortunately, some parents will say, I refuse to meet with, I refuse to meet with. Well, then you've not followed the process, and right there is the violation of staff's due process. And you have to inform staff. Anytime a complaint is brought against them, you have to inform staff of that complaint.
So to be clear, those forms are not only available on the parent section, but they are embedded into the policy manual. So if you go into policies, you'll find all of them in here, if the complaint is, if the complainant is a student, an employee, or anybody else, and it has all the pertinent details, including the elevation, discrimination, harassment, this is the one for discrimination, harassment, or retaliation. There are others within the 3,000. All right?
If I'm not big, she's okay.
Okay, she's got a little. So there's, it's, it's in the 3,000s, thank you.
You got it.
It's in the 3,000s of the policies, under operations, finance policy. They start 3,000, 3115. There's a bunch of them. So I think there's, it's potentially with our change to the, to the, from Neola to Trune, and the update of that website, it does take, you have to go in and look and see where that stuff is, but that's where it's at, it's all.
I can be sure include that to a section in the handbook, like the very first part of it.
I think just a very, very brief paragraph, that, you know, any concerns with all the chain of command, which you can find on the website, which, you know, procedures are.
And I can even make it.
Yeah, I, I just think that that might be.
I can do that. In fact, we've added that clause of if any audit needs to be made in order to ease or things, I can even do it, you know, tomorrow. I'm just saying, in theory.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I think Leslie has a question for Sarah.
I just, you know, I just had a question about our strategic plan, because it shows it goes through the school year of 2025. Is that something we need to schedule to update?
Sure, we, I can get those on the books.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if that was something we need, we want to talk about tonight, or at the next?
We can do it, okay. I think it's best to be done first before, you know, did you guys have a strategic committee before, previously? Do you remember?
Well, a couple of years ago, we had, I sat in on a seminar about redoing the strategic plan, and they came in and spoke with us.
Were you there that day?
Yeah, I was there.
I wasn't.
You were not?
On the school library.
And we kind of, was it Saturday?
Was that Saturday?
Yeah, it was a Saturday.
No, we had, we had the facilitator of the seminar that I sat in, it, he came in at a regular board meeting.
Oh, that was from Troy. I was there for that.
You were, I thought so.
I wasn't there for the planning part.
Yeah, I wasn't.
That was before you.
Okay.
And that's the January meeting, just to figure out what you guys would like, like guidance-wise, or, I, I don't know, so like, when I was principal, it was a small portion, it was like a committee on the board, I didn't, it wasn't the full board.
Right.
So we can, we can add that to January 27.
And if we decide to form a committee for that, we can do that, we can form an ad hoc committee anytime we want.
Sure.
Okay.
We just appoint three people to a committee, and it, it begins.
Because I think you can, like, answer Chris's question too, with, with the strategy and procedures of increasing test scores, and does it really involve us giving, you know, as far as financial, or, you know, I mean, it's all there. But hopefully, all of our committees are going to be directed towards that learning improvement anyways, that, that bottom line, so.
All right, any other questions for Sarah?
I just want to point it out that this should all be very congratulatory towards Josh, because next week, or two weeks.
It's in two weeks.
Two weeks, he is going, taking his band to perform at a very prestigious band director conference. So they were all talking about it at the superintendent meeting, and so it's very, very, it's a big deal.
It's huge, and there's, it's the best bands in the state of Michigan that are invited to, to even apply. So we were invited to apply. I'm going as a champ, Laura. I'm super excited, and I think that, I understand, there's a video that can be purchased, if you, which I'll be buying one, because my daughter's in it, but I'm, I'm really excited for it. We're, the kids are all staying at the Amway in Grand Rapids, which is beautiful.
Gorgeous hotel.
I mean, they'll have just fun walking in, and looking at the lights in the lobby, right? So it's, and it's a small group. There's like 35 students-ish going, and they, they sound amazing.
It's so amazing.
They sound amazing. There's a formal dress rehearsal this Sunday, if anyone's interested in going. I think it's at Marysville High School. It is amazing to.
I'm traveling to Grand Rapids to see it.
You are, to see this group. It's just, brings tears to my eyes. They're amazing.
So good. That's all of that.
All right, any other questions? Entertaining the last motion, oh, we don't have, there's nothing on there, but we have no need for a closed session, all right? Last motion of the night.
I move to adjourn the meeting at 7:00 PM.
Support.
It was moved by Member Bobzien, supported by Member Rosenau, to adjourn the meeting at 7:00 PM. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. I got you here. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is it good?